So let's give the benefit of the doubt on that question for now until we see the final budget. We are down to the last three minutes. I know you all need to get up and stretch your legs and then we need to get to the business meeting. Could I have a motion to recess? I have a motion?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
No, I chair the reentry committee. The Catholic family center. That's who the district should be. Because they understand this transition stuff. They got it down pat.
Do they?
Yeah. I chair the reentry committee. Mike Green's on my committee.
Oh, yeah?
A couple of police officers are on my committee. There might be some from the district that's on there.
Present for you.
But that's who the district should be.
Yeah, yeah.
They really should be.
Catholic family center?
Some, yeah.
Supporting overste?
Supporting overste is the person. But the woman that runs it is Ann Grant.
Ann Grant?
Yeah. I was thinking about you too when I was on.
Oh, hello. Nice seeing you.
Oh, really? The hell's going on with this? Got the selection issue. I say he's popping. I'm gonna sit back and be popping. This is wild. This is wild.
It's gonna get more interesting when you get to the final.
Oh, that's in the reviewing. I don't see that. I don't know. No, no.
Or it's like a second ballot. And I'm pretty sure.
But back. Thanks. I seen you getting it. But the only issue is, is the money. Because you take it from there, you gotta put it somewhere else.
Well, that's why I prefer that he do it. Because he can figure out.
Right, right.
You know, and he's able to do that with African, African-American studies.
What's up, man?
No, he's.
How you doing?
That's preferable.
Yeah. I don't know where he would add it, but I'm telling you, that connection, they can make a connection with Catholic family center.
And Catholic family center could do it much deeper. And what'd you say, Grant?
And Graham.
Graham?
Yeah. And I mean, they, they, they help so many people with transition from prison to job. Margaret Porter's on the Yomen's job.
Yes, she is. She really is.
But I think that we can connect with the Republicans hurt.
Well, and that might be the way to sort of save money, to partner with somebody outside.
Yeah, yeah. And I can tell you, they, it's amazing. You go in there, they got a place, you go in there, you stick prison.
I gotta talk about them more in the radio.
No, no about that. I was wondering about that. I've talked about that. Ben said about special. Oh, you talking about the cabinet?
Lead the whole issue of these teachers.
Oh, no, no, he has a thought? I'm assuming that he's figuring since they're all, since most of these cuts are gonna be through attrition. Or is that not clear?
No, no, I'm talking about John Clark. There really aren't gonna be, yeah, there really aren't gonna be a lot of cuts because.
The fact is, exactly. I've heard about it. Adam has said, we only do expect to lose 50 or so teachers. We always lose 300, 300 every year. And we're still in the retirement phase of the year. That hasn't succeeded. So we're gonna lose. The question is whether we're gonna, where we need to lose them. In, you know, in your basic elementary schools.
How do we figure that out before the budget?
Yeah. Here's a section of the budget that we just did, section six, that moves. I forget the term. There's a term that's not coming to my head.
All right, let's just start.
Basically, holder reserve, a funding reserve. Forty-two high school teachers and some odd number of elementary school teachers are funded in a contingency. So it's a case of sometimes folks do get issued and then they get hired back. I actually saw the number of FTEs and now, now that I'm looking for it, I can't spot it, but.
Is this an information?
It was a really quite a large section.
So we don't know going in?
And it was in the support services section.
Oh, yeah, I'm not gonna stop in that section.
But no, we don't, we can't now.
Okay, right.
The only time we've ever had even a good idea was the year that we offered retirement incentives. Because we told them, you can have extra money if you tell us by June 1st. And then, so we could do better on a planning.
But every year, the pattern is better.
Yeah. Now, like Adam has said, 50 to 80. Every year, it's always been, um, like three months.
Tom, has he said anything to you? Has he said anything to you?
No. I could read. Whatever's definitely, I gotta call today.
Not lobbying. Not lobbying.
I mean, because they know most of these positions are gonna be through attrition, I mean, job loss.
Well, I'm thinking that's why I haven't heard from them.
Yeah.
They really don't, they really don't hear.
Right, right.
Right, right. Okay.
Where's the superintendent? Board of Education meeting is hereby called to order. Thank you all for being here. Prior to the board meeting, we had our finance committee meeting of the whole to discuss the superintendent's budget. After the board meeting recesses, we're gonna continue on with our finance committee meeting to discuss the budget further. And we will begin with our act of reverence and pledge allegiance to the flag led by Commissioner Powell.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get to our student recognition, I just want to accept our minutes. We have one, two, three, four, five sets of minutes, which all members should have received in their packets. I'll begin with a motion to approve minutes from the executive session dated March 20th, 2008.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Yes, you were there.
Seconded by Commissioner White. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of March 20th, 2009? This should actually read 2009, not 2008. So I'll just make that correction. We need to make sure we get these minutes corrected for the website. It should not be March 20th, 2008. It should be March 20th, 2009. All those in favor of correct, accepting minutes from March 20th, 2009, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We next have minutes from March 26th, 2009. Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second? Seconded by Vice President White. Any discussion? All those in favor of March 26th, 2009? That was our regular board of education meeting. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Any?
Not there.
Okay. Any abstentions? So you abstain or you vote no?
Either way, I just was not there.
Okay, so you.
So I didn't want to vote yes.
Okay, all right. So Commissioner Elliott will abstain because she was not here. So the ayes have it and we have one abstention. March 30th, 2009, motion to approve those minutes. It was a special meeting.
So moved.
And again, we need to make sure it's 2009, not 2008. Moved by Commissioner Powell. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The opposed have the same privilege. Any abstentions? Those pass. Last but not least, we have, I'm sorry, not second to last but not least. We have March 31st, 2008. That was the meeting in which we named the Dr. Walter Cooper Academy School. May I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And we also need to change the date to '09. Moved by Commissioner Elliott. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The ayes have it. Last but not least, April 6th, which was a budget public hearing for contracts for excellence. April 6th, 2009, may I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Brennan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. Those minutes are approved. We will now move on with our next agenda item. I am pleased to have with us for our student recognition, the Enrico Fermé School Number 17 Fire, led by their music teacher, Mrs. Ms. DiMario and Ms. Hannah. So thank you. Give them a round of applause. I will ask my colleagues to move down to the front so we can face the choir. And they're gonna do a couple of selections for us.
Thank you so much for inviting us. My name's Ms. Hannah. This is Mrs. DiMario. We're both music teachers at School Number 17. Behind me are some members of our string program at 17. We have approximately 75 students in strings. We are gonna play three songs for you. One that we recently performed at the All City Concert. And we are very excited to be here. Thank you for the opportunity, for inviting us. We always enjoy sharing our music, our musical gifts with the community of Rochester. We've had several opportunities this year, and this is our highlight of our year. So thanks again for inviting us. In a few moments, you'll also be seeing our chorus students at 17. This year, we have two large choruses, grade three and four and five and six. The numbers have doubled and tripled since Ms. Hannah and I have been at School 17. The excitement of music is fantastic, so thank you. We hope you enjoy it.
Our chorus students will now be performing a song called "A Song of Peace." If I could write a magic song that everyone could sing, I would write a song of hope and joy and things that peace could bring. And when we sang our magic song, all hate and war would cease. With just one song, one magic song, the world will fill with peace. One song for all of us, a song of peace. With just one song, one magic song, the world will fill with peace. If I could write a magic song that everyone could sing, I would write a song of peace. One song for all of us, a song could bring us peace. One song could make a miracle for all of us, a song of peace. With just one song, one magic song, the world will fill with peace. With just one song, one magic song, the world will fill with peace. If I could write a magic song, I'd write a song of peace. One song for all of us, a song could bring us peace. One song could make a miracle for all of us, a song of peace. With just one song, one magic song, the world will fill with peace. We could sing a love, of hope and joy, and things that peace could bring. And when we sang our magic song, all hate and war would cease. With just one song, one magic song, the world will fill with peace. One song for all of us, a song of peace. One song could make a miracle for all of us, a song of peace. One song, a song of miracle, for all of us, a song of peace. A song of peace, a song of peace. Our next song, hopefully we'll have time to do a little bit more. This song was one of our favorites this year. We performed it at one of our concerts as our partnership with United Way this year. And we performed at the Hyatt Regency for a Labor Recognition Dinner. We have really enjoyed this song because once again it talks about the unity and the excitement of even though we're so different, we really are the same in so many ways. We now sing for you "One Nation." Maybe we're not the same color, maybe we're not the same race. Maybe we don't have the same beliefs or live in the same kind of place. Maybe we think we're too different, maybe that's simply not true. Maybe I also have hopes and dreams and maybe I'll share them with you, share with you. We are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. We are a rainbow of, we are a rainbow of. We have our own history, we share our mission. We share where people are free. We know that freedom is, we know that cost is. We share our commitment and we share our dream. We are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh, we are one nation, yes, we are one land. Together in freedom, united we stand. Oh. We are, we are, we are one nation. We are, we are, we are one nation. We are, we are, we are one nation. This will be our last song. We just love singing for you. Thank you so much for being a great audience. It means a lot to us as well. Thank you. Our last song is a patriotic song that reminds us no matter where we go and what we do, we are American every day. We are, we are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. If you listen, you can hear it. All around us, there's a spirit. It's a freedom we are living and the blessings we are given. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. If you listen, you can hear it. All around us, there's a spirit. It's a freedom we are living and the blessings we are given. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. We are American every day. Living, we are living the American way. Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Thank you once again for having us. We appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah, I just got an email today. Okay, good. Yeah, good. Let me thank the school number 17, Enrico Fermi School 17 Choir. They did an absolutely outstanding job. Let's give them another round of applause. I'm always impressed to see young students playing the violin. That's just an excellent instrument, I think, to learn and I'm happy to see them playing that. And we have the student recognition student performances before each of our business meetings because it serves as a reminder to us that there would be no school board, there would be no district, there would be no teachers with jobs if we didn't have students. So, thank you for that. We will now move to speakers addressing an agenda item. I would ask the speakers to make their way to the podium as I call your name. I will call your names in groups of threes. You will have three minutes to address the board. At the end of your time, it will beep. Please don't place me in the unfortunate situation or position of needing to cut you off. We have a packed agenda today, so I'm going to be very strict with the timeframe and I'm going to have to just ask you to make your remarks brief and to the point. We'll begin with the first three speakers. If you are here, if you can, all three of you can come up, start making your way to the podium. You can stand by the table. Aaron Shoemaker, Aaron Shoemaker here? Are you here, Aaron Shoemaker? Okay. Crisino Sepioni, are you here? And then Mary Adams, are you here? And we'll begin with Aaron Shoemaker. You have three minutes.
Hello, okay. Military recruiters are recently, were recently at my school and I feel they did not give a fair presentation of the risks and possible negative outcomes of being in the military. He did not provide statistics when asked such as, when asked such as death tolls or numbers of soldiers who successfully received college funding. The opt-out plan pushed by the military is unnecessary and invasive. Many students do not know that filling out a form so the government does not have your school information for future recruitment is necessary. The existing opt-in policy satisfies both students who want to be contacted and those who do not. Also, it is my understanding a proposal is being made to change the forms handed out at the beginning of the year where students will have the option to receive information from being, from the military. What many students do not know is that this minor decision could result in unwanted phone calls, home visits, or, as well as ongoing pressure tactics from recruiters. I strongly urge you to keep the existing policy. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm a student at School of the Arts and a member of Rochester Students for a Democratic Society. I'd like to first remind this board on the topic of military recruitment that at the February meeting, you guys committed to having a full meeting on this topic before making any decisions, so I'd just like to remind you of that. When I and others addressed this board in February on the subject of the military recruitment policy, Superintendent Bizard responded that the NCLB is flawed, but that we are a nation of laws and that to act contrary to law would lead to a nation of criminals. I have a few things to say about that. We may be a nation of laws, but we are also a nation of moral lawbreakers. Last, last meeting, I mentioned Frederick Douglass and the Fugitive Slave Act because it was particular to the character of this city. But as a nation, we have other honorable historical figures who disobeyed the law based on morals. Our very Declaration of Independence was an illegal act. After all, the founders were Englishmen and England was a nation of laws and there was much more at stake than federal funding. I'll also mention the Underground Railroad again because it is worth mentioning, a clear and blatant and morally necessary defiance of the law. In his letter from a Birmingham jail, Dr. King wrote that, quote, "One has a moral responsibility to disobey unjust laws." I would agree that with St. Augustine that an unjust law is no law at all. Given this noble history of moral disobedience, when the man in charge of my education tells me that we are a nation of laws to justify not doing what is right, possibly even by his own opinion, I find that argument lacking. On a slightly separate note, I was pleasantly surprised at the receptiveness of several board members to the community at the February Board of Education meeting. I was also bothered though by Commissioner Elliott's insinuation that the opt-in policy is less patriotic than the opt-out policy. Because he had better words than I do, I'd like to quote Malcolm X. "You're not supposed to be blind, so blind with patriotism that you can't face reality. Wrong is wrong no matter who says it." Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, Mary Adams, is Ms. Adams here? Mary Adams will be followed by, and if you could start making your way up to the podium, Charlie Richardson, Karen Pelk, and Doug Noble, please, if you can start coming forward. Ms. Adams?
Thanks for the chance to make some comments. I'm a parent of a City School sophomore. I'm opposed to schools giving student information to military recruiters without parental consent. I support the existing policy in Rochester established by the board a few years ago which essentially requires parents to opt in before having their children's information given to the military. Military recruiters are pressuring the district to change our local policy so that all children's information is handed over to recruiters unless parents actively instruct otherwise. Military officials have argued that the district is not in compliance with No Child Left Behind provisions and with Department of Defense guidelines regarding the sharing of student data with the military. This opinion is far from settled and there is widespread support for our local policy. I was happy to see school board members, parents, students, civil liberties lawyers, and others come out in February to defend our local policy. We are responding to the news of the administrations, we were responding to the news of the administration's unilateral violation of existing board policy in January when a letter was sent to parents informing them that their children's private information would be given to recruiters unless they opted out in writing. Existing local board policy truly reflects the values of our community and should be proudly and strongly defended. When the issue came up in February, Sean Carroll, a reporter with Channel 13, did a "Person on the Street" set of interviews. He reported, "Everybody I spoke with out in the community said, 'Hold on, I liked the old policy.'" Then, in interview after interview, people on the street were showed on Channel 13 articulating their view, their views that the military recruiting should not be done in schools and that parents should be involved in releasing student information. I am opposed to any change in the existing policy. As some of you have eloquently stated before and as articulated by the Civil Liberties Advisory Letter, the NYCLU Letter, there is no tested evidence that our policy is in violation of No Child Left Behind provisions. I urge you to take a stand with your constituents and defend against the anti-democratic maneuvering that seems to be verging on bullying from military officials in our community.
Thank you. Charlie Richardson, are you here? Please come forward. And if Karen Pelk and Doug Noble are here, if you can make your way to the, to the side of the room, that'd be great. Mr. Richardson, you have three minutes.
Just got a question of the board and Mr. Bizard. Again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you again. It's on parent involvement. We've talked about it before and how important it is to education and that. And I just came from a bylaws committee from the new advisory council, we're trying to put the bylaws together. My question is, you know, how serious is the board about it? And what monies has been put aside out of the Title I money and that to rebuild and get our parents to meetings and get them back involved in their community? That's number one. Number two is, the question is, what I made the offer of the other night is, in the northeast part where we've got some real problems, if the board would consider, and Mr. Bizard, of assigning to the elected officials from the northeast region to take the worst school that is worst performing right now and cooperate with us and let us get in there and see from the students themselves and also from the parents why the parents are not involved? Those are the questions I'd like to have answered, please.
Are you finished?
Yeah, I asked the question.
We don't, we don't respond to questions. Our job is to listen. We, I took your questions as rhetorical questions. We're not answering your questions. Not, not in this, not in this venue. Are you finished with your remarks?
Okay, is, is there a way that actually you could then forward to us so we know, you know, what we're doing?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Also, I would urge anybody that does not have board members' phone number, I don't know a single board member up here that, that does not return phone calls, that doesn't call people. The board office telephone number, (262) 8525. My number, (423) 2207. Call, leave messages, we'll respond to it. You don't have to come to a meeting and ask us a question when we know we can't answer it up here. Next up is Karen Pelk, is she here? Followed by Doug Noble.
Good evening. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. As a former graduate of Franklin High School and involved in the Alumni Association of Franklin High, we are disappointed with the superintendent's decision to close two of the schools at Franklin campus. The stated reason is that this decision has been made is that Franklin is on the state surlist. It appears that the school district has some favorites within the district. Other high schools such as Franklin in the district are pushed aside and in some cases are set up to fail. Our city high schools do not receive the support or acknowledgement they deserve and need to change their image. Parents and students, the district customers, do not know what is going on with the tax dollars being spent by downtown. We need transparency and put our tax dollars where they are most needed, with our students. Franklin High School has numerous changes, an administration with no consistency, lack of support from downtown, a high number of special education students, incarcerated students sent to Franklin rather than their original school, a high number of students who are young parents and being located in the highest concentrated area of poverty in our city. The superintendent showed little or no interest in our high schools, in our high school at Franklin. His recent visit consisted of a short walkthrough. It was obvious to the staff that the decision to choose to finance in bio schools was made early on. Recently, we learned from teachers in the bio science school that RIT's Dr. Desler is awarded bio science students full scholarships if they complete the middle college program and are accepted by RIT. If those schools are closed, these students will lose that opportunity. It has saddened Franklin alum to see the lack of support and the life that this building once had and the school spirit we once felt has turned to apathy. The district has implemented school of choice and students do not come from the areas surrounding their school campuses. Non-academic programs have been cut and there is little to offer students outside of social studies, math, English, and science. As alum, we are currently planning to join with the mayor's office clean sweep on May 16. Students, parents, and Franklin staff and community members will participate in this community effort together. We are hopeful that this will be the beginning of change in the school spirit and establish a new commitment to the Franklin campus. The Alumni Association of Franklin High School is hopeful that we can help to make needed changes with the help of the support of the school board at the Franklin campus and that our voices will be heard. We have a lot to say and we look forward to hopefully working with you to make these changes and to give, God bless you, and to make those supportive changes at Franklin High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pelk.
I have three questions to ask you to consider. First, here we are revisiting the district's military recruitment policy again, this time because of a letter from Army Colonel Gorkins to Superintendent Bizard threatening to report the district for non-compliance of No Trial Left Behind. Commissioner Powell has asked the district to communicate to Colonel Gorkins that according to that law, he must first confirm that he is the official designee of the Secretary of Defense on this matter, and second, he must request a formal meeting with the district. My question to you is, has the district communicated all this to Colonel Gorkins? If so, has it received a response? And if not, why is this premature policy review on tonight's agenda? Second, the words "opt in" and "opt out" do not appear in the law itself, but rather they originated in a letter sent by federal officials to state school officers promoting a particular interpretation of the law that has never been tested in court. My question to you, are you aware that despite all the threats and official posturing, there is no legal evidence that an opt-in policy is in non-compliance with the law? Finally, number three, according to the curious interpretation of parental consent in No Trial Left Behind, release of student information is not permitted to require a parent's affirmative agreement to release it. But that sort of affirmative agreement is precisely what we mean by giving consent. My question, how would you react if you discovered that you, that your consent, say, for your child's medical procedure or expensive purchase or class trip had been simply assumed because you had not read the fine print to decline? How about if it was for your child's trip to Iraq or Afghanistan? Thank you.
David Dorn first. David Dornford. David Dornford will be followed by, if these folks can come forward, Harry Murray, Brian Cafflers, and Annette Pinella. Mr. Dornford?
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of the Veterans for Peace. I first want to commend you on the fact that you're having these hearings at all on an issue that you previously through resolution had already decided. Setra solution regarding opting in rather than opting out reflects positively on your courage and integrity in the true tradition of Susan B. Anthony, Frederick Douglass, and our prominent role in the underground rhetoric. I implore you to maintain your resolve in the face of threats and the promise of junkets by the military recruiting offices. That behavior not only is coercive, but it's also in violation of DOD Directive 1344.10, which addresses the issue of military personnel vis-à-vis political behavior. It is improper, it's against DOD policy. I notice the fine gentlemen aren't here tonight. I will not bore you with my personal views as to the virtues or vices of recruiting practices, although I have some very strong ones, as the issue of your resolve, as the issue, as your resolve and courage, that's what's at stake here. The issue should have been addressed by the military to the Department of Education, not by threatening the school board. I do want to express my dismay at the stance of the administration on this issue and its failure to notify us of recruiting events so we can present the alternative according to another board directive that is not being followed. Again, I pray for your continued courage and resolve. Thank you.
Harry Murray. Harry Murray will be followed by Brian Cafflers.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm the parent of two Wilson High School graduates from three and six years ago, so I'm sort of a parent emeritus. I'm a city resident and taxpayer for over 20 years and a professor of sociology at Nazareth College. When my boys went to high school, parental written permission slips were required for field trips, even for little ones, to the museum. I find it incredible that the board is considering a policy which allows military recruiters access to students without the same requirement of parental permission, which poses a greater risk to the child, going on a field trip or going off to war. A soldier runs real risks of being killed or being maimed horribly or scarred morally. She may kill someone, perhaps an innocent that she thinks is running a roadblock. I've worked for over 20 years at St. Joseph's House of Hospitality with homeless veterans. I've seen the results of war on soldiers, and I think parents need the right to protect their children. We would like to believe we live in a nation with responsible leaders who would not send our sons and daughters into danger without good cause. Anyone who's lived through the last eight years knows that's not the case. The previous president sent U.S. troops to devastate Iraq for no legitimate reason. He acted with callous disregard for the lives of our troops, to say nothing of the Iraqis. While I don't think the current president will do that, we have no guarantees for the future. Therefore, we cannot enact policies based on a mistaken faith in the goodwill of our leaders. We must give our parents the ability to protect their children. I urge you to do the right thing, to maintain a policy which requires positive parental permission before information is delivered to military recruiters. If necessary, take it to the Supreme Court. Thank you.
Brian Cafflers. Is Brian Cafflers here? Annette Pinella? Is Annette Pinella here? Ali Abdou Matin? Ali Abdou Matin will be followed by Patrick Fink and Carla Allen.
Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. As principal of International Finance High School at Franklin, I and my staff are committed to creating the conditions that offer our students the very best education possible. International Finance and Bioscience High School at Franklin were the first two small schools created from closing the comprehensive high school of Benjamin Franklin High School. Research-based components of a small school model include limited enrollment to no more than 400 students, creating a chance for personalized relationships, an intellectual or academic partner such as the College Board or Expeditionary Learning, autonomy relative to staffing, budgeting, program development, so that a specific culture can be developed, central office support and consistency, and incubation time for the school to create their quote "footprint" or program. The rollout of our R C S D's small school model was done with little to no fidelity to the model described above. My enrollment peaked at 584 students, and this year is the first year our enrollment has been below 500. We had no access to the intellectual academic partnerships that the current small schools have. This year, I'm working with my six different supervisor in six years. There has been significantly varying degrees of support, direction, and resistance to effectively rolling out the model. The infrastructure needed to fundamentally support the small schools was not established. The paradigm for supporting small schools never shifted. Our current school improvement plan, now known as the Comprehensive Education Plan, indicated that our school would increase test scores by 10 percentage points in ELA in math. We were cited as a SIR school for 7th grade in math. Over a three-year time period, our math scores have moved from 3.2% of our students' meeting standard to 40.6% of our 7th graders' meeting standard. As a matter of fact, scores for all of our content areas for our middle school students met AYP. Our high school math scores have also met AYP. Graduation rate was 1 percentage point below the standard, but we showed a 14 percentage point increase over the previous year. This year's projection for graduation is 57% as of today. Suspensions are showing a marked decrease over the three-year period, down from 516 to 242 during last school year. Our theme, International Finance, is being factored into the experiences that we provide for our students. A group of 11th graders recently competed in the Fed Challenge. Students functioned as would-be members of the Federal Reserve and had to make recommendations to a panel of judges based on their analysis of data, and we were the only R C S D school to compete. Our virtual enterprise teams routinely are invited to present their business plans to groups of judges because their plans are written with depth and foresight.
Thank you, Mr. Abdou Matin. I have to cut you off, I'm sorry.
Can I just close with my last statement?
Last statement, please, quickly.
Our academic and social trajectory is moving upward for our students at a very fast pace, and despite the challenges that we face, we know and have evidence that our school is poised to make a significant and exceptional strides forward for our students, and we ask that we are afforded the time, resources, and support to continue the work.
Thank you. Thank you. Patrick Fink, followed by Carla Allen.
Before I start, I'd like to say hello to Sarah. How you doing, Sarah? Good to see you. I'm not surprised you're in that chair, by the way.
You get your homework done?
I'm not her teacher. Good evening. My name is Patrick Fink. I'm a math teacher and registrar at International Finance High School of Franklin. I'm here tonight to share with you some information that was told to students, staff, parents, and community regarding the phase-in-out of our school. I was at the meeting with students in the cafeteria, I was at the meeting with parents and community at the Franklin cafeteria, and I was at the board committee meeting in this room on the 9th of April. This is some of what I heard. Finance is a low-performing school. Perhaps we are, but how so? Are there other low-performing schools in the district? Why are we being singled out? According to our most recent report card, which was just made public last week, we met AYP in mathematics, we met AYP in all areas but secondary ELA and graduation rate. Much of the district does not meet AYP in those areas as well. We were told we are the bottom 5% in the state. And what? I'm not sure about that. The state will come and put locks and chains on the door. Why would they do that? We are only on a year or two of our SIR status. Only 29 sixth- go seventh-grade students picked finance as a school of choice for high school. Why is this so? School of Choice was the same week that it was announced in the media that the Franklin campus was a toxic environment. I think that may have influenced some families. Our 812 special ed population by percent is the same as the district average. This is wrong, not true. It's a false statement. The state notified R C S D about closing our schools. How did they do this? Did they do it by phone, by letter, or by both? The state contact persons for International Finance and Bioscience did not know of any such plan. I think that's important to know. Our CTE graduates composed 33% of our last graduating class. My principal, Mr. Abdou Matin, was asked, "Why so low?" I have a question. What are the percentages of CTE graduates of the other high schools that offer CT endorsement? Let me say that I'm not making any of this up. This information is available to you. I'm almost done.
Thank you, Mr. Fink.
If we have the interests of students at heart, why is it closing our schools? It is not fair to them. If two other schools in the district didn't have the staff reapply an interview for their positions, why can't we do the same? Over the break, I visited with my stepson in Columbus, Ohio. Do you know what the graduation rate is in Columbus, Ohio with an enrollment of 55,000 students? 74%. The superintendent, Dr. Jean Ayers, has been there for eight years. She's a graduate of Columbus School System. She's doing something right. I'm very impressed.
Okay, I gotta ask you to conclude.
Oh, I have one other thing to say.
I gotta ask you to conclude.
Commissioner Evans, Commissioner White, Commissioner Brennan, Commissioner Campos in Abstentia, Commissioner Elliott, Commissioner Powell, and Commissioner Williams. I'm asking you to vote no on this proposal to phase out our school.
Oh, thank you.
During my first year of teaching, my administrator was Viola Hawks.
I have to ask you to conclude. I got the students that can follow directions for three minutes, but I'm having teachers and administrators that cannot. I have to ask you to conclude.
Mr. Fink, there's more than one way to skin a cat. This is Ms. Hawks, Viola Hawks. I suggest we skin this cat a whole different way.
Carla Allen.
Good evening. My name is Carla Allen. I'm a math teacher at International Finance High School. Anatole France has been quoted saying, "Nine-tenths of education is encouragement." It is our duty as educators to encourage, be honest, and create an environment of learning. This year, International Finance has been on an emotional roller coaster, from closing our school to not closing our school to phasing out our school. It is very difficult to keep a positive environment with this constant uncertainty. Currently, we have sophomores participating in the GEAR Up and Middle College programs, which will be taken away from there in their senior year if you decide to phase out our school. This will mean some of our students will lose the opportunity of a four-year scholarship to RIT, free credits during their senior year, and miss the opportunity of college prep assistance given by GEAR Up from their 7th grade year. Time and time again, statements have been made that we are making the decision for the students. And if so, why will our students be penalized for making a choice to stay or not to stay? Most of our students are well underway to CTE certification, and if they go to another school or decide to stay, will they have that same opportunity? A commitment, a comment was made at the committee meeting on April 9th telling us that we are making progress, however, we are not making it fast enough. Well, I liken that to our students. What do I say to some of my students who are making progress, but they're not making it fast enough? Do I give up on them? Do I tell them that they're not worthy anymore? And do I push them aside because I think their time as progressing is not fast enough in my eyes or by the pacing chart or by state guidelines? For example, we have a student at our school, three semester, three cart marks in a row. He was at a 1.07. We decided to put him in the middle college program to see if we can motivate him. In that process of that program, he went from a 1.07 in six weeks to a 3.07. I count that as progress. Board members, I am asking you to take into consideration to support our school at Franklin. Understand that in the media, we do have a lot of setbacks. I am asking Superintendent Bizard to give us the wealth of information and knowledge that he has from New York City and also bestow that and share that with us at Franklin High School. Instead of deciding to phase it out, give us the tools that he used as a teacher, as a principal, and as a deputy superintendent, I believe, in New York City. And that's what I'm asking you. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Nan. Brian Nan will be followed by Angela Kraus.
Superintendent Bizard, my name is Brian Nan, and I'm a special education teacher at the International Finance and Economic Development School at Franklin. And what I can't understand lately is why are you closing our school? I voluntarily transferred, went through the interview process, and was accepted to Franklin, then called the Career Academies eight years ago to do what was then, eight years ago, to what was then a new school and a new beginning. The original Franklin Comprehensive High School, which had a long history with many academic achievements, sports accomplishments, and distinguished alumni, ran into decline, especially in the 1990s, and was phased out. My father-in-law went to that school, and he's 90. The new International Finance High School at Franklin began six years ago. We were the first campus, I believe, in the Rochester City School District to convert to the small schools model. That transition was difficult in the beginning. We had a lot of growing pains, some of which included new staffing, four different vice principals in six years, and now a disproportionately high number of special education students compared to other schools in the district. But also in that short period, we've had several accomplishments. We've improved our graduation rates, improved our math test scores, and reduced our suspension rates. In addition, we have accomplished robotics, Prism, Model UN, and virtual enterprise teams, and we recently competed respectfully in the Federal Reserve Challenge with some suburban schools that included students taking AP classes in economics. Our library, main office, and many classrooms, some equipped with smart boards, have been remodeled, and the new cafeteria connected to the Advantage Federal Credit Union gives our students tangible business experience that they can apply to the real world. But most importantly, over those six years, we've developed trusting relationships with students. That takes time to develop. So why are you closing our school? Why are you giving up on us so soon? Would you give up on a six-year-old or a sixth grader that easily? Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, Angela Kraus.
I am here tonight to address concerns regarding the military recruiter policy being considered. I believe it is not only the right of a parent to be involved in the decisions impacting their children's future, but also their responsibility. It is a contradiction that we ask for parent involvement and support in education and yet consider limiting the opportunity for parents to influence their own children with such significant decisions as connecting with a military recruiter. It is unfair for us to allow the classification of a Title I label to permit the proposed changes so that we can continue to receive or begin to receive No Child Left Behind funding. These priorities are not in the best interest of our students and their futures. We cannot ask students to submit information of this magnitude when at the same institutions we don't trust them to make decisions as simple as whether they wear hats or carry book bags in our schools. In the event of a parental non-response situation, it is still our job to protect our students. We should not have a right or a responsibility to provide their information in this way. Please join us in opposing the change to the current policy. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the superintendent's report. Mr. Superintendent?
Good evening. I came with the formal report to the report we made on the budget tonight, but there are three things I'd like to... but there are three things I'd like to briefly talk about before we turn to the next item on the agenda. Just three, four resolutions on the packet. One is 781 on the calendar. So you know, there's been a lot of work done in trying to, to put this calendar together. As you know, may know, we are bound by the R T A contract for 185 teacher days maximum. So what you see here is within, within that context. This year, as last year, we actually include the number of days students who actually are in school. As opposed to years before that, we want to make sure that we show the number of teacher days and student days and of course, edible days by the state of New York. So that's on the calendar for, for this year. So if you look at December, you'll see there are about two weeks that schools are actually closed. It is not something we do unfortunately by choice, but we have to work within, within the kind of timeframe. We're close to finalizing the, I guess, makeup days for snow days in case we have to close schools. But right now, we feel this is the best calendar we could come up with in collaboration, of course, with the R T A leadership. The second resolution on, on the agenda is 780 on the S E G rules and regulation. It is our first sort of attempt to begin to reform that entire document. We have more work to do, of course. But this was our first, first take. There are two major categories that we're looking to reform at this point. One, of course, has to do with accumulation of sick time and vacation days. As you may know, the old regulation or the current regulation, I should say, allows for S E G members to front-load days. In fact, just a side note, when my contract was being negotiated, I asked to bring days from New York City and I was told I couldn't do that. And of course, the second day I was on the job, I was told I had 15 vacation days. It is a practice that I think is not aligned to current good business practices. And what we're asking to do, of course, is to have S E G employees earn days as they go. The second part that we're looking to change currently in the regulation has to do with the rate, with the increases in pay. Right now, of course, we are bound by COLA Urban, a cost of living adjustment urban, and for S E G, that happens automatically, doesn't need anyone's approval for that to happen. What we're asking is, of course, in this day of economic challenges and or what may happen in the future, to allow for some discretion in making that happen. I believe anything above COLA Urban must be approved by the, by the board. But would like to have some flexibility in reducing and or eliminating if need be, either this year or in years to come in the future, in never knowing what future financial situations we're going to take a look at. The last two things I'd like to quickly talk about is the Franklin schools. Of course, we have some folks here who are talking about the Franklin schools. I believe the principal said, well, for Franklin Finance, that the school didn't benefit from intermediaries, didn't benefit from what we know works very well in small schools, practices that have been placed at the College Board schools, at the old Douglas Campus. The schools are doing quite well, or at least potentially will do well in the first graduating class. There were issues around implementation with Franklin. I still stand by the fact that we need to radically change the cultures in that school. Otherwise, we will never see the gains that can happen in the school. That said, I'm going to ask the board for now to table the two resolutions so we can talk a little bit more for the next few weeks about the future plans for the school. And of course, N Y S C D is very interested in our conversation because, as you know, all three schools are in their second year of SER. It's, it's a matter of really us making the move to radically improve these schools, radically, and underline the word radically, folks, or what may happen from the state is ultimate closure. We are being visited tomorrow by the Board of Regents, and we'll discuss that with the chancellor, the vice chancellor, and Wade Norwood will discuss the Franklin campuses. I have a meeting that will happen soon with the deputy commissioner to talk about some of the issues there as well. But I'm going to ask that we table them for now to give us a few more weeks of deliberation to talk about the future of these schools. And I thank Commissioner White for coming forward. And we had a discussion with the commissioner as well as President Evans about the need for further conversations about the campus. But we've got to do something, again, I'm not stepping away from the need to radically change. Is my time up?
No.
Just joking. I will stand by the fact that we need to, to do quite a bit of work at the Franklin campuses to really make them what the school can be. And also take exception, folks, to some people who say that because of the location of the school, that middle-class parents will not put their kids there. Take a look at the Franklin Montessori Schoolhouse in the same building on Hudson. And we're talking about middle-class parents who have their kids in that neighborhood, at Franklin Montessori. They will come if we build it. But the fact is that I will ask the board, again, I cannot do that, but I will ask the board to table the two resolutions for further conversation to be revisited either in May or in June preferably. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. We'll now, we'll now.
Are you entertaining any questions of the superintendent's remarks?
Yes, questions on the superintendent's remarks. Commissioner Elliott.
Yeah, in, in the Student of Excellence Committee, is that the name of it now? One of the concerns that I had that if there's going to be, and I know this issue was tabled, the Franklin Resolution is going to be tabled.
It hasn't been tabled yet.
Okay, excuse me, well, that's what they're, that's what he's proposing. In any event, what, where my concern was when we met at the, the committee meeting was, is that I didn't hear any alternatives. So that there, we're talking about radical changes, but the superintendent did not come with any alternatives. So that's what my concern is. If we're talking about changing it, that there is, that you bring in our discussion some alternatives to the change.
If I may respond to that, one of the things I believe we made clear, Commissioner, was the fact that we had the need for a year of planning, which is why if we move to phase out both institutions, that we take a year before new ones are actually open. Because we wanted the kind of community input that I think is necessary to create the kind of school that we need to make happen. That's one. Second is, we need to build teams that will create these new institutions. If you take a look, for instance, at the work being done right now by, by Dr. Cala with the, with the regional school, we're talking about more than a year of planning before that actually can happen. The fact is that we have a number of intermediary partners who have been lined up, ready to work with us in building those schools. And I can name some, I'll name a few. One is the College Board, they're very interested in further work. Another group is called Replications. They replicate phenomenal schools across the country. They're interested in talking. I know Mary Doll has been talking to a group from Baltimore who have designed phenomenal schools, who are ready to talk to us as well. And of course, folks at E L, the ones at Build 58 and the charter school, also interested in conversation. The fact is that we also have dollars sitting at the community foundation, from the Gates Foundation. Money is that we can use to pay for these teams and to pay for, for the lead of the teams to build the new schools. We didn't want to come with a fait accompli. We didn't want to come with a ready-made solution. We know we have to create quality school, whatever the theme is. It could be finance, it could be engineering, whatever, whatever the community wants. The fact is, we're looking for good, strong academic programs. Whatever the theme is, whatever the need is in the area, is something we can create. But the bottom line is, you need good academic programs that will prepare kids for post-collect, post-scholastic work. And, and that can be done, it can be made. You can create a school that will give you 80, 90% graduation rate in a very short time. But it needs to be done in collaboration. You need to have a team in place, team of teachers, administrators, parents, and students who will build a school and make it work for opening in fall 2010. But we didn't want to come, again, with a ready-made solution. We know what good schools look like, but we wanted a team to put in place a program that would respond to the need of our community.
And I guess I would have thought that those remarks that you just have made would have been made with those teams already, that, that there would have been a plan that you have talked with, with the, with the staff at Franklin. So I, my only point is, is that that's something that I'd be interested in. What are the alternatives before we decide to close?
And, and I understand, Commissioner, but just to add one more piece to that. Before we actually moved on to securing the services of a partner and reaching out to the Gates Foundation to release some of those dollars from the community foundation, we had to first show that there was a need to do that. The foundation, as well as those partners, will not invest the money until they know that there is a need or commitment to making this happen. To secure them and contract with them without going through the step first, we didn't think was viable. Again, bottom line is, if we do this before the school year ends, we'll have a better part of 14 months to put this together. And it can be done. But again, we've got to, to make a decision about the schools. If we're not going to close them, then there is no need to, to contract with those partners because they will not come to recreate schools. There are other people who work in terms of transformations. Right now, we have two of the schools working with, oh, is it three, Michelle? Working with Dr. Lou Smith. All three? Or two? Two, I'm sorry, two of the schools, not, not one of the ones we're looking to, to phase out. But it's, it's of finance and global media actually working with Dr. Lou Smith in transformation. But once the 08 graduation numbers come out, we'll see where those schools are. But the fact is that different organizations do different things. And the ones we've been talking to about creating new schools will not come unless we are, we're creating new schools.
Any other questions for the superintendent on his report?
I do.
Commissioner Williams, and then our student rep.
What's the timeframe in terms of, you want to table this now?
Yes.
When will it be brought back before the board?
I suggest that we schedule a few meetings during the month of May, commissioners, to talk perhaps about this with the public or private, to talk about some of these issues. My concern, of course, has to do with placement. Because the longer we wait to, to make a decision, the incoming seventh grade class, of course, is what is being affected at this point. Kids who have chosen the two schools to come there in September. So if we wait too long, we will have to push this back another year.
Okay, well, yeah, placement as well as the uncertainty. I mean, you know, with the uncertainty, it creates an additional level of anxiety, both for the students as well as the staff in terms of not knowing which way the board will go.
Yeah.
Whether in terms of phasing out or, or keeping the school open.
Yeah, the one, the one thing that we should know though, we're not talking about outright closure. And that's important to, the distinction between the two. Whether the school is phased out or not, the staff for the most part remain, and the students will not go anywhere. Because we're talking about not accepting students, not sending them someplace else. So those students who are currently enrolled at the Franklin two schools would remain at their school, no matter what decision is. If there is a decision to phase out, then you would have a few staff members who would be affected. You have fewer students and a need for fewer teaching staff. But those teaching staff would be sort of going to different schools because other schools would have slightly increases in numbers. So there would be a net zero across the district. But there's a staffing, there might be small differences in allocation for the two schools, but students would not be affected either way.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Williams, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, I'll get to you in one second. Commissioner Powell, our student rep had one, you had a quick question, student rep? Go ahead, please.
I guess, just based on what Commissioner Elliott said, is I would like to know why is the phase out basically our only option? Because when I think about alternatives, I think about in the past, we've closed different schools and it's kind of been like schools that became alternative buildings, alternative buildings that became schools. And it's very, I think it affects the students a great deal because a lot of times, you'll have a student in an environment, and then when it changes, the student is greatly affected. When, I remember when I was going to Wilson, when they changed Madison to Foundation. It affected the high school. So there are three schools in one building, if I'm correct, if I may speak correctly. But I just think, and as far as the staffing, a lot of people are staffing, losing their jobs. I just think, we have to think about the alternatives, about how it's going to affect kids and also like, what, what is our goal? I mean, is it going to be, are we going to reach that goal? Because sometimes there have been, there could be disappointment in that realm. So I want to know.
Closing schools, Sarah, is never an easy decision to make. Staff would not be losing their jobs. Because as long as you have students, you have a need for staff. So if the two schools of Franklin lose students, they would lose staff, but other schools would gain students and gain staff. So the fact is, no one would lose their job in a process. Talking about affecting students, in fact, that's exactly what we're trying to do. If you create a great institution, student achievement would soar. If you have the right systems in place. Staff in the school talks, talk about essential support and, and et cetera. I can't talk specifically as to what happened in the past. But the fact is that you cannot create a small school movement or an innovative school movement without the right kinds of structures centrally. That didn't exist in the past, which is one of the reasons why we've created Office of School Innovation. I believe the DNC in the editorial said to talk about what happened in the past, what didn't work. When you look to look at the plans for the schools many, many years ago, they were wonderful plans, not executed well, or perhaps over time, lost their way. As you change principals, as you change leadership, as central office staff change, the innovation, the, the, the vision sometimes can disappear. Like any organization, if you don't keep your eye on the prize, it can change. I think to, to recently, somebody asked, the folks at Global Media, what does that stand for? What is the theme? They couldn't talk to it, but now they can because of a partner. But the fact is that when you take a look at some of these schools, what they preach is not what exactly happens. So again, not to blame staff or blame the principal, but there's a lot of people who are culpable in this process. The fact is that you need to create an office that remains the agitator to make sure that the innovation remain. When you take a look at the folks at the College Board, for instance, if we don't do right by those two schools at that campus, they are calling me and complaining. Not the principal necessarily, not the staff, not the students, but the partners are also agitators. They make sure that the work continues. So when you have that kind of system in place, we talk about rigor, we talk about relevance, we talk about partnership. And the part, I don't mean a business partnership, not like pencil. I'm talking about a school designer, an intermediary partner who has a stake in this, who very often are not on our payroll, or got money from, to the Gates Foundation or some other foundation, who their names are attached to the school. They're going to make sure that you're doing right by the school, that your policies and practice align with the vision and innovation. So an internal office that keeps an eye on what is going on, and outside agitators that watch as well to make sure the vision remain, no matter who is in charge of the school or the district.
Hold on one second. Sarah still has the floor. Are you finished, Mr. Laws?
I have a follow-up question.
Okay, quick follow-up question. And just point of clarification, I believe the superintendent requested that we table this. So I know we have more discussion, but go ahead with your last point. And then I'll go to Commissioner Powell, and then Commissioner Elliott.
If I'm clear, there have been meetings at the school, right? Some of, some of central office staff has gone over there to talk about plans and things like that. My question is, is obviously, I haven't been able to make any of those. But are we telling them what the plan is? Or are we going both ways and asking them how would they like to see their school? Because it's not only about, I don't feel that it's only about what we decide here at Central Office makes a school. But I also think it's about parents being involved in the process and students definitely beyond. Because students are the people that go there. And the faculty too, because they know they're building best. So and, and recent, and processes from before that I've seen have not been, it's been a disappointment because I, I felt like it's gone over the heads of students. So I'm just, I just want to put out there and ask that in this process, we have opinions of faculty, staff, and parents because a school is not going to be successful with just an opinion of the head.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Powell.
I just want to be clear that if I understand all of our courses of action, if nothing changes, the schools have been on SER status for two years. If the results from this year don't prove to be substantive change, would not this be the year that the state would intervene, whether we take appropriate action or not?
No, we actually have another year before the state would actually take action on, on, on the school. But it's important in, in, that we, if we, if schools need to be closed, that we are the ones who do this and that is done, not done to us by the state of New York. It's important that we push to, push the innovation forward and not wait for someone else to do it for us. So it's important. So we do have another year while we've been trying to be proactive in this process. And Sarah, to, to address your, your comment, at times it's difficult to have the people who are living in the forest or living within a system to try to innovate. You're talking about folks who perhaps are, are either directly or indirectly responsible for what is not working in the school. And to have them be the ones who innovate is very difficult for people to do. When you used to, when you used to do it in a particular, when you used to do it in a particular way, at times it's hard to step away from that and do that. But the bottom line is, we, we've been talking to a lot of people. I do believe in involving all parts of our community in making this happen, but you also need fresh eyes to take a look at what needs to happen.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Elliott.
And I will just make this comment, and you know, when we open it up for discussion another time, we can talk in depth about it. My concern is, is that we are penalizing these schools when in essence, it has been central office that has not done their due diligence. They have not monitored. They have not ensured that the schools were small schools. They're the ones that did the dumping ground into those schools. And so we want to penalize schools when in fact, it has been the central office that has not done its due diligence in ensuring that those programs are operating within the themes that they're operating in, finance and, and biosciences. Those are two very credible, incredible, critical themes and jobs that are going to be needed here locally and globally. And for us to want to shut them down, I think that it needs to be reconsidered and we need to look now, turn to the court. But, but let's not, let's not blame the schools when central office has not done what it's supposed to do as well. And, and we can just continue that for further discussion.
Again, I guess just to reiterate my earlier statements. Again, I guess just to reiterate my earlier statements, no one is blaming one particular group. I think everybody's culpable in this point. When a school fails, when a school fails, everybody is responsible for what happened, not just one in the school. No one is cast blame only at the school. Everyone is to look in the mirror and see their role in what happened to these schools. They are not so schools by accident. The fact is when a school becomes a so school, it is bottom five percent in New York State. So it doesn't happen by accident. It happens because many of us, and again, really the collective us lose what is, what is happening. The fact is if we, if we really want to radically raise achievement, we've got to make some difficult decisions for what needs to happen. Again, we can do this over the course of 10 years, we can do it in three to four years. That is the difference we have to take a look at.
Thank you. And I'll just say I'll be looking forward to the conversations we'll be having around Franklin. I'm sure some of these conversations I hope will take place in executive session because I'm very interested in hearing about particularly in terms of what we're going to do in terms of the leadership of these various schools because I think attitudes in schools are a reflection of leadership. So I'll be looking forward to hearing the comments around that because I think that will help, could help move this school forward and see positive changes. We'll now move on to standing committee reports for the Board of Education and we're going to begin with our, let me start with our student rep. Do you have a report, Mr. Laws?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. I'm pleased to say that I'm done with my semester at U of R. And it was definitely an interesting, it was definitely an interesting experience. If I could do it all over again, let me tell you, I will not take philosophy. So.
Just get older. You'll, you'll appreciate it as you get older.
I like the philosophy that I'm creating now.
Wonderful.
So just a few shout outs as I always like to start off. I just want to say to Seventeen School, I believe that was the school that performed. Mrs. DiMario was my music teacher growing up and she was phenomenal. So the choir did an absolutely great job. The second thing is the academic showcase I went to was phenomenal. I loved, the turnout was awesome. It was great because as a student board rep, I don't get to go out into the schools because I need to take care of my responsibilities. And it was great because I got to talk with several students, adults and district employees that work in our schools. And just to see the positivity that our students portrayed was great and I got my progress. So that was a good thing too. And SLC met Wednesday and they discussed, recently members of SLC met with members of the communications staff to brainstorm ideas for a new campaign promoting the importance of attendance. Last year, skip now skip out campaign was strong, but this year we wanted to make it even better. The purpose of the campaign is to stress to students in the Rochester City School District how important it is to attend class and not to skip class and how skipping class can affect students' futures. Members of SLC and communications, new past local and national campaigns and discuss ways that this year's campaign will really refer to students. Members of SLC gave some helpful input about what kinds of wording, themes, visuals and overall message of advertising they would really want to hit home with RCSD students about the importance of attending class. As we move forward with this campaign, the communications department will continue to pursue with members of SLC to make sure that this campaign's message is something that students will both relate to and listen to. So that's very important. Our next meeting is May 25th. And my last shout out is Rochester just celebrated its 175th anniversary. And Lincoln School Number 22 held a poetry contest with the Rochester theme to celebrate both Rochester's anniversary and National Poetry Month. Francis Parker School Number 23 created a happy birthday Rochester banner and decorated it with student handprint indicating that the hand students have the city's future. School Number 50 researched and wrote 175 things to know about Rochester, which will be donated to the Rochester Public Library. And everybody really appreciates Rochester, so do I. That's all I have to say and we can move on.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams and the Audit Committee.
Mr. President, Board members, all board members were invited to attend the Audit Committee meeting on Tuesday, April 7th at 5:00 PM. We discussed renewing our contract with Hodgson Russ for independent legal counsel. We forward this committee, the committee forward the recommendation on for approval, which is in our board packet, Resolution 779. We also discussed the Audit General's Capital Projects Audit Report. However, due to time constraints, the meeting was recessed and will resume with the full board on May 5th at 5:30. That's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Powell and the Finance Committee.
Yes, Finance Committee, of course, met as a whole on April 7th, 21st and 28th, which was today, on the 2009-10 budget. In conducting its regular monthly business though, it met on Thursday, April 23rd. We received the capital improvement plan proposal for 2009 through 14, the five-year plan, which we will be voting on with our budget this, when our budget comes up for vote. I believe those who weren't in attendance, the PowerPoint presentation was provided in your packet and we will receive a color glossy formal CIP before we're asked to vote on it. But the essence of it and the schools that are expected to receive funding, all of that information was provided in the PowerPoint in your packets. We have, we also received a quarterly change order report and briefing on how that quarterly process will be presented to us. We received three binders. We'll be responsible for managing and updating ourselves. If you want a course of instruction, I'll have Tom Kesa come talk to you. It's rather complicated. Or you can come to our next Finance Committee meeting and we'll go through it again just to make sure we get it right in our heads. Then on to regular business, we did receive the monthly reports. This month, they include budget amendments for 2008, nine school year based on changes to grant funding, so fairly routine. Those budget resolutions are in your packet. They are Resolutions 762 through 765. At this time, I would like to move that the board accept the monthly financial reports, which are at the dais.
There's a motion made by Commissioner Powell to, seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Any discussion, board members receive these in their board packets. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, the ayes have it. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. The regular workload of resolutions included Everge and Resolution 751 for address accountability, Resolutions 753 through 755 for procurement items, Resolutions 744 through 750 and Resolution 752 for facilities, either final payments or new construction bids. And I believe, I believe that's all that's in this packet. All of the items that were brought to the board were, received recommendation to approve. Our next Finance Committee meeting will be May 21st, 5:30 PM.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell, Commissioner White and the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Excellence and Student Achievement Committee met on Thursday, April 9th at 5:30 PM. There was a presentation and you all have heard some of it today regarding the proposed phase out of the International Finance Career High School and Bio Science and Health Career High Schools at Franklin. They are a part of, presently a part of our Resolution 760, Resolution Packet. They are Resolution 766 and 767. Several students, parents, staff and citizens were given an opportunity to address the committee. I might add at this particular time that it, the issue that was presented at those meetings was a difficult issue and a challenging issue. And I must say my observation is that I observe responsible and effective leadership on both sides of the issue. Jean Claude Bizard's team, which included Mary and Ray, had a difficult task and they performed it exemplary. Ali and Mary, Ali of course being the principal of finance articulated the problems as he did tonight. He also did at the ESA meeting, the problems that occurred as a result of perhaps a lack of focus from central office many years ago when this school was initially formed. Mary, that is the principal of bio science, most recently distributed to the members of the board and articulated a plan for improving a bio science. And finally, I would note that effective leadership was shown by the citizens of this community. It is obvious, at least to me, that the students, that is students, parents, teachers and staff love their Franklin. They not only love it, but my observation has been, as has been pointed out, that they've shown that love by increasing their graduation rate. I want to finally thank Superintendent Bizard. He probably has the most difficult job out here, the job of trying to improve a district that for many years has struggled. It is not an easy job and I can't imagine why anybody would want it, but he wants it and he's doing it in a way that I don't think anybody else could. We appreciate that leadership and we appreciate the leadership that he has shown by saying, hey, listen, let's table this and let's talk some more at the table. We hope to do that in future meetings, perhaps including the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee. The next meeting will be held on Thursday, May 14th at 5:30 PM. That's the end of my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Vice President White. Commissioner Elliott and the Policy Committee.
The Policy Committee met on April 21st, Mr. President, and we discussed the idea about having a parent representative to serve on the Policy Committee. We have a parent representative that serves on the Finance Committee and that works very well. And so the board staff is looking at drafting an announcement for us to be put on the website and also to collaborate with the Office of Parent Engagement for, to identify a parent to be on, on our committee. So that is, that'll be forthcoming. We also discussed Board Policy 5100 regarding student attendance. There was a proposed amendment to eliminate existing timetables and replace it with an attendance goal of 90%. We decided to table it until we can get further information from the district. And lastly, we have a proposed policy to amendment to Board Policy 1240.1 in reference to the military recruitment policy and we'll talk more about that under new business. The next policy will, the next Policy Committee meeting will be held on May 19th at 6:30. We will discuss at that time as, and I'll bring it up at, under new business, our student arrest policy. We'll also talk about the school naming process and Commissioner White's proposal of inclusion of city council representation on board committee meetings, board committees. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Commissioner Brennan and the Board Governors.
I'm late here again. We had intended to meet on the 14th of April and the meetings were canceled and I'm actually awaiting.
You're waiting for me, so.
Guidance, yes.
Yeah, we'll get, I think we're going to look at scheduling a June Board Governors Committee meeting.
We anticipated the meeting of the whole and that's why.
Right, yeah, yeah. The Board Governors Committee will be a committee meeting of the whole and we will discuss, we will have the superintendent's quarterly update to the board at that time in June. I have a bunch of things, but I'm just going to highlight a few things. First off, let me just wish Commissioner Camples well. She had her, she had little Raphael, who's going to be a future Rochester City School District student a couple of weeks ago, so that's why she's not joining us today. I bet you if her doctor didn't tell her to stay home, she probably would have tried to make it. So that's why Commissioner Camples is not here, but she will be back at our May, May Business Meeting. So I do want to wish.
President Evans, maybe she's watching it on television?
Oh, if you are watching it on television, Commissioner Camples, hello everyone. And I hope you're not making that poor baby listen to all this stuff. I'm sure we'll put him to sleep because I'm almost asleep. I want to just highlight a couple of things. Commissioner Powell, Commissioner Williams and the superintendent and I had the opportunity to visit the MCC Gateway to College Program. I think we came away with a wealth of information. We look forward to hearing more from MCC and the administration, what's going to happen with that program and where that's going to stand after we're done with this budget session. And then I do want to also just highlight and thank two neighborhood associations, the Nineteenth Ward Delegates and also the Charlotte Community Association. I had the opportunity to speak with concerned residents in Charlotte regarding issues around Charlotte High School. And I think that we came up with some very positive, positive outcomes from there. And I do want to highlight just about the folks in Charlotte. I was very pleased that they actually came with solutions. They didn't just come and talk. They actually came with solutions and they wanted to volunteer to help and that was very, that kind of restored my confidence in, in folks in the community. We have so many people in this community that want to help. Same thing with the Nineteenth Ward Delegate folks. So that was, that was excellent. Other stuff, I'll put it in my weekly letter on Friday because I don't want to hold up the meeting any further. And I want to move on next to item number seven on the agenda, the consideration of resolutions. Just so everyone knows, we have Resolutions 715 through 743. Those are human resources resolutions. 744 and 750 say facilities. And then we have a bunch of other from 751 to 781. And just so everyone knows, 751 is IT and accountability. 752 is a lease. 753 through 755, our procurement and 762 through 765, our budget. So hopefully that gives everyone a snapshot on what it is you're going to be, what it is we're voting on in terms of this large block of 751 through 781 of other. I'll begin with entertaining a motion to approve Resolutions 715 through 743. Again, these are human resources resolutions. Questions can be related to overarching concerns, but if anyone has a particular question on a specific individual, we are required to go into executive session. So I will entertain a motion on Resolutions 715 through 743.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Any discussion around resolutions, questions around 715 through 743? Vice President White?
Yeah, just a very brief comment with respect to Resolutions 726 and 728, page 15 and with respect to 728, I think it is, and page 10 on Resolution 726. I just want to thank Jean Claude for making good on his promise that he made many, many months ago. I think he first started and he said, many of our schools were not certified by SED to offer STE, I think is what, ST, CTE, I'm sorry. And I noticed on those two resolutions, there is an effort afoot. It looks like one at East, if I understand the resolution correctly, Resolution 728, that's with respect to East High School and Resolution 726 is Global Media Franklin. There is an effort to make, get those programs certified. Is that right? Is that what we're doing there?
At East and at the Edison schools.
Yeah, yeah. And I, I know, I can't remember when you came in when you said this, but you did a survey or you had somebody here say after a survey of how many of the schools we had that were supposed to be technical schools, but they weren't really certified. And it looks like through these two resolutions, we're spending some money to make, get our staff up to speed so that we can eventually be certified. And that, that is good because I don't think a lot of people, we think we have these schools like finance, I don't think they're certified, right?
I'm not sure about finance.
Global media, that obviously is not certified because that's Resolution 726, right? So we're making progress that actually makes, the law magnet program, we call it the law magnet program, but it is not certified. So I remember you presenting a inventory of our schools and saying, many of these schools are not even certified. I forgot who on your staff did that inventory.
By Beverly Gushu.
Beverly, was it? And, and it's good to see we're finally making some progress. So thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Commissioner Elliott.
Resolution 718, why are we just receiving this resolution when the leave of absence was August 21st, 2003 through June 30th, 2004?
Well, 2003, Commissioner, I mean, Mr. Superintendent?
Michelle?
Pass the buck, pass the buck.
Can't memorize it all, Commissioner.
That's right.
Excuse me?
Something would leak out if I tried to memorize all of it.
Oh, all right.
Good evening, Commissioners. Typically, when someone goes out on a leave of absence, they give an extended period of time and we have to go through our legal department to ensure that that person time, and we have to go through our legal department to ensure that that person has abandoned their job. So, this is a case of that situation, and now it's coming to Board Resolution just today.
So, it takes five years?
We've had some people on for more than five years. To be quite honest with you, we've had someone, I discovered when I took over the department, has been on the system for over 10 years. No pay, no anything, but just been on the records. So, now, legal department is working very closely with my department to clean up different cases like that, where people have left the job and basically abandoned, and they're cleaning up those cases, okay?
Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
One second. Commissioner Elliott still has the floor.
Were you going to refer to that same resolution, or you were going to?
Well, to a different one, but.
Okay, but, all right, just so I can keep everything perspective, you still have the floor, so.
Yeah, let me, Resolution 722.
I guess the same one.
Is that the same one?
Yeah.
That the employee was granted a leave of absence from November 7 to March 2009. When you look at Resolution 724, we're asking to approve a retirement for the same person, effective March 14, 2009.
Can I get back to you on that one, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Commissioner Williams?
That's the same thing.
Oh, same, same vein, okay.
I will get that in writing for you, but I have to go back and check that one out. Thank you.
The clerk has passed me a note. Motion to extend meeting beyond 8:30. May I have a motion to extend the meeting beyond? Moved by Commissioner Brennan, second. Oh, no, in seconds, we can finish. Second, second, second reluctantly by Commissioner Powell. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we will continue until we get all of our business done. Any other questions around Human Resources Resolutions?
Yes.
Commissioner Brennan.
Just quickly, these ones they're going to get back to us about, are we acting on them tonight?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Good question.
Can we, can I make a motion that we table 720?
That would seem to be reasonable.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry. No, you're making perfect sense, Cynthia, actually.
Okay, so Commissioner Brennan, you, are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay, Commissioner Elliott, you, motion please.
Yes, I'd like to have tabled Resolution 722 for the, 722 as well as Resolution 724.
Can we, does it?
Nah, I'm willing to do the individual.
Right, just make it A or B, Commissioner, please.
Yes, let me just make sure that, let me make an amendment to propose Resolution 722B for the retirement of the graphic arts employee.
Okay, let me make sure I get that.
And we're going to table that.
She's got an old version.
Am I saying this right?
Okay, I see, I got it, yeah. Yep.
All right.
722B, you have that for the graphic arts employee?
We're going to table that, all right? And then.
And 724B also?
Yes, the graphic artist, I'm going to make a motion that this be 724B.
Okay.
All right? And that we table that resolution.
Okay.
Do I get a second?
Second, second.
Okay. So, 722B and 724B. Madam Clerk, have you captured that? And then if we can get answers to these, we can vote on this when we do our budget.
Michelle, looking at the 722 and 724, is it possible this person is taking a terminal leave? They're taking a leave through March 13, and they retire in March 14?
Yes.
So, this is not, it's not a contradiction. We have individuals who actually take terminal leaves.
What's a terminal leave?
Meaning they take sick days until they retire, retirement days. Because if you look at, if you look at 722, it's possible. 722, this individual is taking a leave of absence from November 1 to March 13 without pay, and then retiring on March 14. So, it could be, it could be medical, it could be something else, I'm not sure.
Retirement days matter in terms of how they collect retirement benefits, Cynthia.
Yes.
Well, I still like for us to table it so that we can get more clarification.
I think, I think it's quite clear, though, Commissioner.
That's me.
Well, if you take a look, November 1 to March 13, and they retire in March 14.
What I'm having a problem with is the fact you're talking about that you're taking, he's gone, but he's taking days off. I guess I'm unclear about that policy.
But he's not, he's not. He's not being paid for it.
I still, I understand what you're saying, but I'm still unclear about that.
My only concern is that we may be messing with someone's livelihood in retirement, in retirement. What they're doing, what I'm looking at the dates here is not illegal at all. And my concern is that this person's retirement is going to be delayed by a month, and that may be someone's livelihood.
But do we know the answer to this? Is?
I mean, looking at the dates, Michelle, it's quite clear for me. November 1 to March 13, retiring March 14. So, it's a day after the official leave is actually over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, right.
Oh, okay.
Right, there's a motion on the floor, so.
I rescind mine. Can I rescind this?
Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, Commissioner Elliott. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. You wear many hats.
Yes, I do. We have a very competent HR director.
The issue still is, is that he, the retirement, the leave of absence was from 2007, and this is 2009, and we're just getting it. I mean, I mean, it doesn't impact the, I'm still voting in favor of it, but it seems to me that perhaps we should have received this back in 2007.
It's possible the person just filed?
Yes.
Sure. Okay. Commissioner Elliott still has the, has the floor, please.
I think beyond the discussion that we've had, that would have to take place in an executive session, because there are particulars that would explain the question.
All right.
Okay.
But they can't be answered here.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. And Commissioner Elliott has withdrew her motion, because we got clarification from the superintendent on, on the retirement and leave of absence. So, we'll go back to our original area, 715 through 743. Any other clarifying questions, colleagues? Okay, hearing none. Starting with.
You know what, I do have, did you go to?
One, 715 through 743.
One other one, 742. And I sent an email to the superintendent regarding this one, but this one, this person contacted me about the fact that he's out on medical leave, got hurt on the job. So, the law is saying that we've got to terminate him. So, he, when he gets well, if he gets well, he doesn't have a job to come back to, so we're, we're asked to approve.
Point of order, you can't, right.
All right.
Right, okay, right.
Well, can we table this, 742, as opposed to?
This is going to executive session.
Yeah, I think executive session might be a better, because we provided a response to the question, Commissioner. Again, I cannot discuss it in public here.
Right.
But your question, we provided the legal response, and I don't believe we have a trust in that matter when it comes to the legal piece. We can discuss it in executive session, if you'd like.
So, when are we going into executive session to discuss it? And I guess I'm concerned about.
Motion to sever this resolution from the remainder so that we can dispense with this piece, and then, and then perhaps take up this sole issue after all the resolutions are resolved?
Okay.
Yeah, my only concern is, is to make, I mean, we recessed the Finance Committee, the budget here, and I wanted to make sure that we can do that. So, I wasn't necessarily talking about having an executive session tonight, per se, but if that's what we need to do.
That's the only way you're going to get your answer.
Second.
All right, motion to sever, all those in favor, motion made by Commissioner Powell to second, I mean, to sever, seconded by Commissioner Brennan on Resolution 742, and we'll deal with this when we're done with all the rest of our business. We can get a quick, two-minute executive session, and we can, you can go into more detail on that.
Michelle, can we make sure we have the explanation prepared for afterwards? Sorry, you're going to be here with us for a while.
But we'll do this right after we're done with all the other business. Motion to sever Resolution 742 was made by Commissioner Powell and seconded by Commissioner Brennan. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we are now dealing with our Resolution 715 through 743, with the exception of Resolution 742, which, once we get the answer to that question, we'll, we'll vote on it accordingly. And I believe we already had, any other, any other things before I call for the vote? Before we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 715 through 743, with the exception of 742, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
726 through 737.
726 through 737, no for Commissioner Elliott. Madam Clerk, have you captured that? Okay, any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it, thank you. We will now move on to educational facilities. These all went through the Finance Committee. Resolutions 744 through 750, I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
So, moved.
Moved by Commissioner Brennan, seconded, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions or discussions around 744 through 750? Hearing none. All those in favor of resolutions? Student rep, do you have an advisory vote on Educational Facilities Resolution 744 through 750?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Resolution 744 through 750, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, no on Resolution 746, 747, 748, 749, and 750.
Madam Clerk, have you captured those no's? The ayes have it. Thank you. We will now move on to other, Resolution 751 through 781. And again, I gave you a brief.
Can we batch these up a little bit? We do want to separate 766 and 767.
Yeah, I got to make a motion.
And also, would you separate 756, and maybe take that out? An issue there in, in executive session.
Second, please.
What were those other resolutions prior to 756?
Seven, 766, 767, is that what you?
Let me start with, let me start.